Quest for ZBA town report.
Okay, there you go.
Yes, here we are. It's November first, two thousand sixteen. This is a zoning board of appeals meeting. Uh, the Board of Appeals will conduct this meeting, and this is actually the, uh, the business meeting we're opening right now. The Board of Appeals will conduct this meeting according to the rules laid out in chapter forty-eight of the general laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Roberts Rules of Order, and its own particular set of rules entitled Rules of Procedure, copy of which is on file with the town clerk, and other copies available from the clerk at this meeting. This meeting is being taped recorded for the purpose of taking minutes. Once the minutes are approved, the tape may be taped over. So, business meeting, uh, Patty, please, what have we had?
Okay.
Business, new business.
Finance update. Our sheet is just the posted meter, which is, has one ninety-five in it, which should be fine for a while. The last, um, entry is tonight's hearing for fifty-one Andover Street. The next sheet is the expense line item, which hasn't changed. We haven't used, except the July phone bill song we come in. They come in, see if you can see, came in September. So that's why at the end of the year, we, we've always waiting for June, so I can't reconcile, so they always come in, but we have a new phone system.
How's it working?
Um, it's different. It's, it's a desk phone, corded. And then the cordless part of it doesn't work like our cordless phone. It's just like a cellphone. So if there's no wifi, which there really isn't much on the second floor, I can't use it. I walked out the, of the office with the, with the attorney on the phone and it wrapped out on me. So I'm gonna, um, let Mike know. He doesn't know now. Um, I'm sure they'll, I'm sure there's a solution. Um, so I think this will be a different kind of a bill. It's not Verizon, that's for sure. I don't think so, I mean, it's Metro something.
Metro P C F.
But it's voice, voice, V I, Voice Over.
Voice Over I P.
Yeah, that's what it is. Okay. Um, revolving account. The only thing that's in here is revolving hours. The time sheet was split in two.
Uh huh.
So we are at amount spent to date, one, one, five, six, seven, seven, and fees to date seventeen hundred. And the correspondence, um, is in email from Janet Pantano for the town administrator.
Can you hold on one second so I can stay with new business here? I mean, of course, I'd like someone to approve the, uh, the business meetings for October fourth.
Yep, minutes.
So moves.
Uh, thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, yes, aye too as well.
But it, it says here S F not vote on hearing. Oh wait.
I'm not sure, S F not, not to vote on hearing, so we're here for the business meeting.
Voted on hearing.
But I was here. Was it you?
Um, I, I, I.
There you go.
No, that's wrong. I think that's wrong.
Well, we have to make a motion on, uh, eleven Martel Way, the hearing for the ten-four sixteen.
Uh, make a motion to approve, uh, business and hearing minutes for eleven Martel Way, um, of ten-four sixteen.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
So I can vote, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm not sure where that was at.
D K was absent, but not vote on hearing. Well, I wonder on the hearing, we, maybe she wasn't a voter. She did not vote on the hearing.
I said, I have Sharon Freeman abstained from eleven Martel.
Only because you didn't need me, right?
Right.
Didn't vote.
Okay, so then I abstain. Can you bring it with the three of you?
That's all, just from Martel.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, correspondents.
Sorry, I put the agenda way over here on my eyes.
So you were saying about the email from Janet?
Email from the selectman's office or the town administrator, um, annual town reports due eleven thirty. So this is our last meeting before that. What it is, is the same thing we usually do. It's in the mission statement, the updated fee schedule we revised in for two thousand sixteen. Um, the associate members for the fiscal ye, uh, board members for the fiscal year. So that's why Sean's still under associate. And that's because it ended June thirty.
Mm-hmm.
So it goes July one of fifteen to June thirty sixteen.
Okay, let me ask you, where, what page are we on here?
One more. There you go.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And then, page two of the town report starts the, from fifteen dash oh seven. Um, that's like that because.
I can't believe that's all we did.
Yeah, it's just, this is like that because one had gotten, um, is in litigation, so it's pulled out. So that's why you don't have oh eight.
We only did nine?
I'm just gonna just check that. Let me check that.
I'm sure it's correct.
Yeah.
Just seems like we did a lot more than that.
I will check that in.
Well, usually I have one hearing a, a month and sometimes less.
You can vote on it and, and if that needs to be.
Yeah, so one, two, three, four, five.
Need a couple continuation.
Six, seven, eight, nine, yeah, that's probably right.
If the hearing date was, the file was filed numbered, for example, fifteen oh eight, okay, which would be next. If the hearing opened in the other fiscal year, it's not gonna be in here.
Okay.
Okay, so that's why. So I think it was industrial way, which is.
On the next page.
It, oh, that is. Wait a minute.
Yeah, 'cause this ends in June. Uh huh.
Yeah. So the other one. I'm just gonna double check those first.
Could it be the original, um, thirty-four East Main Street?
That was February of fifteen.
Um.
So that would be fiscal.
Right, fiscal year.
What about the, uh, clockmaker guy?
No, that was way before.
Yeah.
That was way before.
So the decision and, alright, so four, five, oh, so this one went on for quite a while, Farm Lane.
Yeah, it went on.
Yeah, three Farm Lane.
That's why. It started in March of fifteen and went to April, then to May, then to Ju- July, then to September, with the extension and the decision.
Yeah, how do we get that out of order? We got, we start on three, three, four, five, seven, nine, and then seven, seven, then five, five. How'd they get bumped in? Central Street got in before Wells Ave. It just, it doesn't matter. It doesn't have to be in order.
You got two and one. Um, see how you have Wells Ave with seven, seven?
Yep.
You had two hearings that night, but when Farm Lane got filed, it was file number fifteen oh seven. So when it jumped to fifteen eleven, that Wells Ave was filed in July.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, okay, yep. That's, it's following the numbers, I understand, yep.
So you gotta, you gotta really file the, follow the hearing date.
Eleven, twelve, sixteen, one, sixteen, two, three, four, five, six. Well, um, someone like to make a motion to, uh, approve this mission statement uh, for F Y sixteen town report.
Make a motion, uh, to approve the zoning board of appeals mission statement fiscal year sixteen town report.
Yep.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, and Patty, if you've double checked that and we wanna make an amendment to it, you'll just let us know?
Yeah, yeah, and then we can do it.
Thanks for putting that together, Patty.
But I'm gonna pull that out and just double check.
Can, can you just, am I allowed to ask a question on it since we already voted?
No. No.
You're not allowed, right? It's done?
Yes, of course you can.
Well, I didn't know if it was.
I miss being chairman, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Unless you wanna just.
What's your question? Go right ahead.
Um, how many days that does a town clerk have to, before it's filed? The hearing from the fourteen days, right?
Fourteen days.
Fourteen business days?
We have fourteen days to write the decision. You don't have the night of the hearing.
So I'm looking at, for example.
Days to file a decision, any appeal of this decision, alright, so fourteen days to file, fourteen days to file. I don't know if that's business days or not. I have no idea.
Yeah, it's every day.
I was just.
Including weekends.
Eyeballing the date of the hearing and how long it's taking, and some are pretty quick and some not so much. I don't know if we've done.
Yeah.
That's because Patty makes them go get all kinds of stuff to make sure that before they come in here, they're ready to go.
It depends, you know, if Jeff has time or whoever has time.
Fourteen days from the decision.
From the decision, correct.
So the decision isn't here, right, right, right?
Well, the decision, yeah, date of decision filed is your.
Date of decision.
File what time for?
Fourth, uh, column over is date of decision filed, yes.
Oh, filed with the clerk.
Right.
Not by, okay, I misread it, sorry.
And not from hearing to decision.
Yeah, got it, got it, got it. Okay.
If you feel more comfortable, you can just amend that, make a friendly amendment to, um, say if Patty needs to revise, needs to revise or insert information.
Oh, to do without our permission? Okay.
And just do it as amended.
Uh, would someone like to make a motion to amend that motion to state that if Patty needs to make any minor, uh, changes to this list of, uh, of petitioners, owners, et cetera, and all the, anything we've passed, if she, if she needs to change it, she can change it without our permission? Does that make sense?
Yep, second.
Okay, there we go. Oh, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Strategic plan draft.
Next, under correspondence is the email from Mike Farrell for the strategic plan draft. This was.
Brother.
Okay, this was, um, all the department heads got together. We were up here and filled out a presentation and, um, basically this is what he came up with when he put everything, all of everybody's ideas and what they thought needed to happen with communication and things like that.
Oh.
That's just, um, from Phil, and then there's an email from Mike Farrell.
Ah.
Tomorrow I have to tend that, you know, that K and P kinda flyer thing. Cause in two thousand seventeen, the public information requests are gonna be handled a different way. Right now, I get a request for information. I have ten days to get that information. We have a sheet we use to charge them for a copy per page. And evidently, this is gonna be a major change, and that's, so Copeland and Page is coming tomorrow at three, I think it's three-thirty to five. Um, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to that.
Refreshments from five to six.
Sure, I guess.
Um, just so we all know, I, apparently there is a meeting on December eighth, if you guys are interested. If anyone's interested in this strategic plan development, there's another email tucked in here. Cordially invite you to attend the next Georgetown two thousand twenty-five strategic planning workshop on December eighth at the Pearly School, so. Just so everybody knows. Uh, no applications?
So, no regular applications.
And, uh, you're, you're.
Or if it does come in, we can put it in for the third of January, because the deadline is today. Unless something came in tomorrow, but usually I know about it. It's something, unless something gets filed tomorrow.
Okay.
So it's still open right now and posted.
Will you be texting us, or we'll be communicating as to whether we're gonna have a meeting or not in the next couple of days?
Oh, yeah, I'll email.
Alright. Uh, I think that's it, and you said you're gonna be with Copeland and Page tomorrow, so someone like to make a motion to close a business meeting?
Motion to close the business meeting for eleven one two thousand sixteen?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. And, uh, that's good. I think we're gonna, we don't need to stop the camera. We have to.
recess. They're not here.
Yeah.
Oh.
There's people outside.
Oh. Oh, I thought that might have been the applicants, but it's not. Okay.
They're outside.
We'll do this later. Uh, you're reading the legal ad.
You read the legal ad.
He's got it. Okay, welcome, everybody. This is the, uh, we're opening the, uh, the, uh, what is this? A hearing, yes, exactly, thank you. Uh, for an application for a special permit for an accessory apartment at fifty-one Andover Street. The Board of Appeals will conduct this meeting according to the rules laid out in chapter forty-eight of the general laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Roberts Rules of Order, and its own particular set of rules entitled Rules of Procedure, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk, and other copies available from the clerk at this meeting. This meeting is being taped recorded for the purpose of taking minutes. Once minutes are approved, the tape may be taped over, and if you could go ahead and read the, uh, legal notice, please?
Yes, a public hearing will be held on November first, two thousand.
Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Two thousand sixteen at seven thirty P M. at the Georgetown Town Hall, third floor meeting room, for an application filed by Eric M. Burton and Caroline P. Burton of fifty-one Andover Street, Georgetown, Mass., for a special permit to construct an accessory apartment addition to a single-family dwelling. The property is located at fifty-one Andover Street in the R A District and identified on the assessors map, five A Lot twenty-three A, pursuant to M G L, chapter forty-eight, section nine, in the Georgetown zoning bylaws. Chapter one sixty-five, sections nine, sixty-nine, seventy-four to seventy-nine, Z B A file number sixteen dash ten.
Thank you very much. Uh, the members of the board sitting tonight are Sharon Freeman, Dave Twist, Paul Schilling, I'm the chairman, interim chairman, and, uh, Sean Dean.
Good evening.
Evening.
Uh, we also wanna let you know that at this point, well, go ahead, why don't you read your.
Yep, uh, just in the interest of full disclosure, um, I filled out a form of, uh, you know, non-conflict of interest. I happen to know the applicants today. Our kids go to school together, occasionally grill a few hot dogs, and, uh, didn't want that to be left out of the equation, so. Uh, while there's no financial gain, it was, uh, more of a F Y I.
Thank you.
Well.
Um, we're also a limited board. We only have four members present.
You may wanna ask the audience, you have to ask the audience if anybody has an issue with that, and then also let them know he needs a unanimous vote tonight.
Oh. Absolutely. Yes, I was gonna announce that, but does anyone have, uh, any, any problem with Dave being on the board, sitting and voting on the board? No? Okay, and, uh, we will need a unanimous vote of all four members to, uh, allow you or to, to, to vote on this, essentially. So, uh, um, you have the choice of, um, delaying this for another month if you want, or to, whatever you need to do, but, um, I guess as it goes along, as we go through this hearing, we generally have a good idea of what direction it's going, and we try to give you a little bit of a heads up. If there's some sort of complication or something, we, we oftentimes allow you to, uh,
Withdraw.
Uh, withdraw without, what, not without prejudice, but withdraw, yeah, without prejudice, I guess, and, uh.
Or they could choose to continue.
Or you can choose to continue. There's, there's, yeah, there's a couple of different options if we get to that point.
And then it wouldn't be needed a unanimous vote. It's up to you, it's basically.
Yeah, as a.
Prices at the last minute.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't expect any surprises, but, um, uh, so why don't you go ahead and, and introduce yourselves and, and, uh, give us a little idea of what you guys are applying for?
Okay. Uh, my name's Eric Burton. This is my wife Caroline. Uh, we're applying for the accessory apartment. Uh, it will be in the, um, colored location right here, first floor. Um, it's basically, uh, a request, um, my parents, I'd like to have them move up with us. They're currently down in South Carolina. They're at a very tender and old age, and they're on their own, so, uh, I kinda wanted to bring them into our home and, um, help them live out their remaining years. Um, both my wife and I felt that them being around our kids would bring a little more youth to them. Um, unfortunately, we only get to see them about twice a year where they are right now, and, um, due to their health and their declining health, they're becoming shut-ins where they are. So, we thought this would be a great option to have them right next door. We could walk next door and keep an eye on them all the time. Um, and, um, hopefully, we would love to have it to where they are here their remaining years and not have to do like a nursing home or that kinda thing.
Excellent. Um, at this moment, uh, I'm gonna, people are gonna be able to, uh, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to, uh, make any comments, but I'd like to read in the exhibits right now, Patty, is that okay? Uh, okay, exhibit A, uh, site plan existing. Uh, exhibit B is the Burton residence, uh, proposed south elevation. Exhibit C, which is also sheet number two, proposed first floor plan. Exhibit D, sheet three, proposed second floor plan. Exhibit E, sheet four, proposed north and west elevations. Exhibit F, how you doing? Good?
Yep.
Uh, you already have this in there, don't you?
Yep.
Sheet five, proposed east elevation.
Oh, I typed it out for you, right?
Well, I guess so, yeah. Exhibit G, sheet six, existing first floor plan. Exhibit H, sheet seven, existing second floor plan.
And those are all drawn by architecture.
Yes.
Joel Gagman.
Correct. Um, the board is, you guys are gonna be able to ask some questions in just a moment. I'm sure there are some. Uh, is there anyone from the audience that would like to introduce themselves and make any comments at this point? And if you do, you can approach the podium and, and, uh, write your name down and.
Just here to listen.
Okay, alright, very good. All, everyone, okay, great. No comments. Alright, great, guys. Um, I'm sure there's some questions. This is a, uh, this is a beautiful plan that you guys have got here. It's a little complicated, um, and I, and in a good way, too. It's a nice, nice plan, so. Uh, you guys, uh, having reviewed this, you guys have any questions on, on how this whole thing lays out here?
Yep.
Can I just ask where?
Absolutely.
Like which property you are?
Where do you live on?
Cedar Lane.
Cedar Lane, okay.
Cedar eight.
Behind.
And if you have questions after they discuss.
Yeah, just approach the podium and.
Uh, you've done, uh, a, a lot of, of measurements here, and I think that the key number for us is the six hundred and twenty-something square feet. That's the actual livable space of the, uh, of the accessory.
Twenty-six, yeah.
Yeah.
And that actually on, um, it's not on your handout, but that's represented by the shaded areas here.
Yep.
And the, you know, the room dimensions are all on your copies.
Right.
Um, so we only, you know, you'll see on the sheets that I have a minus twenty square feet, and that's this little area that I'm taking out of the eleven six.
For closet space, yep.
Yeah, yeah. So, the rest of this is all exempted. This is the common area, so they're actually gaining a front door facing the street. Right now, the only doors into their atrium space, which is not visible, so I know fire departments are, are happier to see a front door.
Of course, yeah.
So this becomes the main entrance into the home, and then it's a shared common space into both, um, sectors.
Yep, um, just for the record, why don't you introduce yourselves, just so that.
Oh, yeah, Joel Gagman from Architecture Residential Design, Mary Mac Street, Hable, Mass.
Get that, Patty?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, usually our, our chairman, the, uh, common chair, he ha- asks a lot of technical questions, and I have read this over, and I'm not really seeing any reason to, to not vote for this. Uh, does anyone have, anyone have any questions? I mean, your setbacks are fine, your square footage, footage is fine. Uh, you've put a lot of thought into making this work, uh, aesthetically. Um, the neighbors don't seem to have any issues with it. I don't even know that any of them can really see. Can any, any of you guys even, can you see where they are putting this addition in?
Be able to?
Yeah, um.
Cause there's trees, and if those trees come down, then our, our backyard busts their backyard completely.
Yep, is this in the back?
The one that you just did in addition? Did you get it? Are you, the yellow one?
No.
Oh, I know, yeah, yeah, those big plants.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's, let's forbid those come down.
Those aren't going anywhere.
Yeah, not by our.
Those aren't going anywhere.
I really hope not.
No, no, no.
What, what's your last name?
O'Malley.
It's, um, this one, it's, it's, it's that tip corner, right?
Right in the.
Up here, yeah, okay, I see it, yeah, yeah, yeah. So the addition's going on the other side. Well, no, I mean, you'll still be able to see it, but, um, I, uh.
So the, the top level, what is, is there something?
I think it's gonna be higher.
No, correct.
So you're not increasing the.
No, actually I have the ridge of the addition at the exact same height of the existing cape.
Right.
Yep.
And, um, the whole structure, it's not as wide as the main house, so I brought, I just brought the second floor walls down as knee walls, just to achieve that. And the only thing poking up a little higher is the, the chimney food box in the back that's still on it, but that's no higher than the existing chimneys now on the front.
So the second floor plan for, uh, number three, who gains that space?
This is the primary residence. This will, this will be for the homeowners.
Yep.
Um, right now, their children are in two bedrooms that don't really have by today's code a proper egress window. So, we're taking one of the bedrooms and converting that into like a homework loft area.
Yep.
And then the other bedroom, we're adding a dormer with an egress window. Their master will also get a dormer, um, on the front for egress. But then the two new children bedroom will be over the existing garage where they'll have the proper, uh, codes.
Yep.
And then they'll pick up a nice big family room for everyone to gather. It's big enough for the whole family.
As long as it's not increasing the roof line, I'm.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, uh, very, very nicely done. Um.
And so we have the comfort level of our guests in the back. The trees are going to stay, so we're on the record?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yes, that's on the record. We love those trees, yeah.
Yeah, someday, uh, another garage or something that, that, in another location if you need it, but you don't even need to worry about that.
Yeah.
There is, there should be noted on the plan, there is a barn on the property, so that could easily be converted to a garage if.
Which is.
It's a, it's, so where the house faces this way?
Yep.
On the left-hand side towards the front of the road?
Yep.
And you can see it on, uh, this plan here. Um, this year, there's an existing barn, so you could pull in the driveway and literally pull in the park there.
Perfect. Very good.
So.
Yes, sir? You seeing any issues?
Uh, you're, you're aware, if you sell the house, you transfer ownership or title, that, um, uh, you have to, that, you know, the special permit lapses, right?
Yes.
And it's only to be occupied, uh, by, by your, you know, your folks.
Yes.
Can't be rented out or anything like that.
No, yes, totally understand that.
Blood relatives, so it doesn't, I need.
Blitter.
So her folks are, your folks are.
Or hopefully eventually us, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
If your kids will let you stay.
You're right.
So, this doesn't have relevance for the addition, but where's the front door now? This is Andover Street?
It's, it's right here, yeah.
Oh, that does already exist, no.
No, oh, no, the existing front door.
This is a garage right now, um, with just an attic over it.
So where's your front door?
The front door is actually, right now, it's not really a front door. It's off to the side of the atrium space. The front door is actually, right now, it's not really a front door, it's off to the side of the atrium space.
Oh.
It's actually still going to remain as a French door, it's right here, that, that right now is their entry point into the home.
And that's.
There is a slider over here, but this is.
Sort of, the slider faces Andover Street.
The slider.
The slider does.
The slider does, and then the, the front, what you call your front door sort of faces off to the side.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I get it, I'm not good at it. I'm just wondering where I bring your doorbell, I'm just teasing. I'm just trying to orient myself.
So there was nothing, so with the Board of Health, they'll set you doing, um.
Were do, were you redoing the septic?
Creating a septic.
Yeah, uh, we, um, we went with an engineer, um, I forget the Board of Health, uh, lady's name, but she was, she was at the site when they did the testing, and I submitted, I haven't followed up with her yet, but I have submitted the drawings for that septic. So she does have them, I just haven't followed up with her yet.
Yeah, setbacks are fine, everything is not.
How many acres do you have, like three or something?
Three and a quarter.
Yeah, it's unique, I mean, everybody else in town has a half acre, quarter acre, or whatever, this, there's a couple properties there that have larger parcels.
Yeah.
On the road, no setback.
Yep. Pretty straightforward.
What do you think, you wanna make a motion?
I prefer to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, if that's okay.
Um, before you do that, you technically have to ask, um, the audience a second time.
Comments?
Yep.
Before.
Audience, any comments, questions?
I was actually, um, Sean answered my one question, which was rental versus, and did it stay with the person versus stay with the house?
That's correct ma'am, and it's actually a condition in the special permit.
That's really all I wanted to know, thank you.
Yeah, good, wonderful.
So that was clear, yeah?
That, yeah, that's perfect.
I'm prepared to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
That'll be great, thank you.
Okay, I move to grant a special permit to Eric M. Burton and Caroline M. Burton, or Caroline P. Burton, excuse me, of fifty-one Andover Street, Georgetown, Massachusetts, for a special permit to construct an accessory apartment addition to a single-family dwelling at fifty-one Andover Street in the RA District and identified on assessors map, five A lot twenty-three A. As the application, application has met the requirements of the Georgetown zoning bylaw, chapter one sixty-five, section sixty-nine, A through G. The apartment will be six hundred and twenty-six square feet, does not exceed the greater of either seven hundred square feet or thirty-three percent of the livable, livable floor area of the primary dwelling, and design presented is in keeping with the single-family characteristics of the neighborhood pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, chapter forty-eight, section nine, and the Georgetown zoning bylaws, chapter one sixty-five, sections nine, sixty-nine, seventy-eight, and seventy-nine. I further move that the applicant met the zoning, uh, bylaw, chapter one sixty-five, dash seventy-nine, A through D. That the board found, one, the application is desirable to the public convenience or welfare, two, it will not overload any public water or other municipal services, so as to unduly subject any area to hazards affecting health, safety, or the general welfare. Three, it will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts. Four, it will not cause an excess of that particular use, which could be detrimental to the character of the neighborhood. And it will be granted with the following conditions, one, the accessory apartment is to be occupied by relatives of the owner only, not to be used as a rental property, and the primary dwelling must be owner-occupied per bylaw, chapter one sixty-five, section sixty-nine B. Two, if the house is sold, transferred, or if there's any change in ownership or change in residence of the owner, the special permit lapses, and the new owner must apply to the board for a new special permit. And three, that the apartment shall be inspected by the building inspector before occupancy, per chapter one sixty-five, dash sixty-nine D. Per plan submitted marked as exhibits A through H.
Thank you, sir, any further discussion from the board? Shall we go ahead and vote?
Second.
Why, yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Someone needs to second it, thank you, I'm sorry, thank you. We can go ahead and vote, I think.
Do you roll call?
Yeah.
Roll calls for executive session.
Okay.
Uh, all those in favor, alright.
Aye.
Aye, so it's unanimous.
Second?
I second.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
So it's unanimous, four, four members have voted, uh, uh, there is a twenty-day, uh, appeal period, following fourteen days the clerk has to file a written decision with the town clerk. A person who exercises rights under an appealed special permit variance does so at their own risk. Would someone like to make a motion to close the hearing?
Does that make sense, that made sense? You need to wait.
Twenty-day appeal period, so, anyone in the town that wants to appeal it, or is affected by this decision. Um, following a fourteen-day, usually we turn these, we, you know, we don't really get any appeals very often, so I'm sure Patty will turn this, uh, turn this around, so Patty, um, essentially, we, we, uh.
So we have fourteen days to write.
Right, but we usually take about five.
Sign and stamp by the town clerk.
But basically, if you choose to start your work in the appeal period, and so you do so at your own risk, so it's in your best interest.
To wait to get through that twenty-day.
To wait, just in case, so that's, that's the translation.
Right, and after the fourteen days, it's, it's, within that fourteen days, it'll get filed.
Thank you.
I'll have it stamped by the town clerk after they sign it, I'll give you a call, and, um, give you registry instructions to go to the Southern Essex Registry deeds, and there's a twen, that twenty days that they spoke, and it just says on risk, you can stop building, but like Sharon said, you know.
If someone appealed it and they won.
Someone appeals it, you're, you gotta stop.
Yeah.
Right.
You might wanna wait.
It's up to you, but.
Yeah, shouldn't be an issue.
Thank you, uh, would someone like to make a motion to close this hearing?
Uh, make a motion to close a hearing for November first, two thousand sixteen.
For fifty-one, yep.
For fifty-one.
For fifty-one Andover Street.
Thank you. Second, thank you, all those in favor?
Second.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, yes, we've already discussed, the zoning clerk has a fourteen-day filed decision, any appeal decision, maybe blah, 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 we've already discussed that. Uh, lapse of special permit per Mass. General Law forty-eight, section nine. Special permits granted shall lapse within this, a specified period of time, not more than two years, which shall not include such time required to pursue or await the determination of an appeal referred to in section seventeen, if a substantial use thereof has not sooner commenced except for good cause, or in the cause, or in the case of permit for construction, or in the case of permit for construction, if construction has not begun by such date, except for good cause, again, I love this.
I think a lawyer wrote that.
That's a statement.
Patty, what does that mean?
It basically means that if, um, if within, you need to start your work within two years unless, unless you have a good reason, otherwise this decision is nullified.
You have to make.
You'd have to connect the board before that, save some time.
Thank you.
Can't we just rewrite it to say that?
Yes, please, can you, if you read this.
Are we allowed?
If something happened, they could.
Rewrite that, cause it doesn't make any sense at all.
It would have to be just for just cause.
Alright. We have closed the hearing.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you guys.
Good luck.
Go to adjourn.
Uh, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.